Good evening, everyone. My name is Cindy Vopel. I'm co-president of Rockville Center's PTA Council and along with co-president Nadia Gray, it's our great pleasure to welcome you to the Rockville Center Board of Education Candidates Forum. Our goal for the evening is simple: to provide an opportunity for our community members to learn more about our five candidates so that we can make better informed decisions when voting on May 16th. An informed electorate is a powerful one, and we're heartened to see so many community members joining us here tonight. You'll hear over the next hour and a half or so different opinions, different strengths, backgrounds, and approaches, but like each of you who joins us here, we're all united in one common goal, and that's to keep our schools strong and vibrant treasures that are some of the brightest shining gems in our RVC community. In keeping our children's best interests at heart and with the energy and the interest that's so apparent in this room this evening, the possibilities for our children and for their education truly do seem limitless. To put together this evening takes the hard work of so many, we'd like to take a few quick minutes to acknowledge a few of those people briefly, and please hold your applause: Pat Simpson and Joanne Commander from the League of Women Voters, the moderator and timekeeper for this evening, Kathy Baxley, PTA Council's VP of School and Community, Jackie Wong, our district clerk, Bob Kroger, and Rob Lichter, who are handling our AV needs and taping this for us today, our PTA leadership and PTA Council members who helped us promote the forum and are assisting us today with logistics. And to our five candidates this evening, and again, we do ask you to hold your applause: Wayne Fitzgerald, Tara Hackett, Susan McNulty, Greg Spalding, and Liz Stack. Our sincerest thanks to each of you for taking this leap into candidacy and for your willingness to serve our schoolchildren and our district so selflessly. Thanks also to each of our community members who join us tonight and to so many of you who have submitted questions in advance. We will also be collecting index cards with questions throughout the evening. Please hold them up, we have people in the rows that will be collecting them. Pass them to the end of your rows and they'll be collected and forwarded to our evening's moderator. Our moderator will present as many questions as she can, and we hope to cover a wide range of topics. None of the candidates have had access to either the questions or the topics in advance. One last note, there are five candidates running for two open seats, and you may vote for two candidates on May 16th. Voting will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Southside High School, and absentee ballots can also be obtained through the district clerk's office. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Pat Simpson, our moderator, who will review the format of the evening and get us started.
Thank you, Cindy. Joanne and myself represent the League of Women Voters. We are a nonpartisan organization, we do not support candidates, and in keeping with our nonpartisan policy, neither your moderator nor your timekeeper is a resident or stakeholder in the outcome of this election. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening speech, and we will begin here. Answers to each question will be one and a half minutes, and because time is a factor, when Joanne gets up and says "time," I will ask you to stop, because otherwise we could be here all night and not really address your concerns. Let me just tell you, the questions must pertain to the issues, not personalities. No personal or abusive questions will be permitted or will be asked by me. Each candidate will answer each question, the moderator and I will have the right to rule on the appropriateness of the questions, because I will be asking them. I'm not going to tell you when we stop. As long as we're going, we will go, but I will remind you that the candidates by the end of the evening will be exhausted. So, I'm going to keep a handle on that. And their concluding statement will be one and a half minutes. As Cindy said, please hold your applause until the end, and then you can give everyone a rousing applause. And now, we will begin with Mr. Fitzgerald.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Thank you to the PTA, to the League of Women Voters, to our administration, and to our hosts here at Southside Middle School. What a phenomenal facility we have here at Southside, and I'm just very impressed with this room and the facilities that we've had for our children. Everyone had access to our backgrounds via the flyers in the foyer. I have also published a website, you can go to Fitz2017, Fitz2017.com, to get information about me, background issues that I care about, as well as to contact me and my campaign. I want to start off tonight by stressing three themes that I found our district has an opportunity to improve upon. The first is taxes. I support our budget, and I would encourage everyone to come out and vote for the budget here on the ballot. I'm very concerned about our revenue model. We are somewhere between 2.2% and 2.4% of fair market value when you look at our all-in tax levy, and that's approaching the highest in the nation, that's approaching a term I call just max levy, that we can't really ask the homeowner for more. And I'd like us to undertake a comprehensive reform advocated by the Board of Education as the primary consumer of those dollars, using the Board of Education's bully pulpit to focus attention on the burden we're placing on our homeowners. And we can do that by accessing more state aid and by comprehensive tax assessment reform. Second is technology. I'd like to see us have more technology offerings throughout our grades, especially a four-year coding curriculum in the high school. And the third thing where I think we have an opportunity to improve is the transparency of our board. We haven't had transparency around Dr. Johnson, we haven't had transparency around class balancing. We are doing the work of the public, and the work of the public needs to be done in public.[416.71][416.71][applause]
Ladies and gentlemen...
So, I'd like, those are three themes, and I've gone over my time, those are three themes that I'd like to stress tonight that are part of my campaign. I've written extensively about it, and I'd urge everyone to ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mrs. Hackett?
Good evening. I'm thrilled to be here tonight and be running for a seat on the Rockville Center Board of Education, and I'm also very pleased that there is five candidates this year. Our mission is far too important to have uncontested races for such an important thing. I'd like to thank the PTA Council for putting this together and organizing, and for the League of Women Voters for moderating. The program will give you a little bit of biography about me, but I want to really tell you who I am. I'm a lot like you, I'm a product of public schools, I'm a parent, a spouse, a taxpayer and a concerned citizen, and I'm here to represent every child, I'm about the kids. The core of what we need to accomplish is to embrace our diverse population and find ways to suit the needs of every individual in a fiscally responsible way. Over the course of the evening, I hope to get the opportunity to speak to you about some of the topics that I feel are very essential to our success, but rest assured, no matter what the issues are, that my contributions as a board member would always be thoughtful, mindful, genuine, and trustworthy. I would handle decision-making as I do everything else. I would ask lots of questions and listen, I would do my research, digest and analyze the information, and find solutions with creative thinking and alternative ideas. And although I might have my own steadfast beliefs, I can work as a team and find a compromise when it might be for the betterment of the children. The board needs a diversity in many ways, and right now, we're lacking elementary school representation, which I think is very important, because school doesn't start in ninth grade. My husband and I have both been involved and dedicated members of the community through his coaching of several town sports and my volunteer work in the district. We are both strongly committed to our beautiful town, and I'm fully prepared for what the job requires and its time commitment. I believe I'm the well-rounded candidate that will use my professional and volunteer experience to catapult us over the next three years with an honest, trustworthy, and well-represented approach. Thank you.
Ms. McNulty?
Good evening. I would also like to thank all of you to the Candidates Forum. I would like to take this time to tell you a little bit about who I am and why I think I would be the best candidate for the board. My name is Susan McNulty. My husband Mike and I have lived in the village of Rockville Center for the past 11 years. We have two young children attending Watson Elementary School and six nieces and nephews attending Hewitt and Covert. I have been an active member of the Watson PTA, and I'm completing my two-year term as president. As a family, we are very involved in the Rockville Center community. Our children participate in the religious education, sports, and Girl Scout programs. We enjoy being part of the community and volunteering our time to work with the children. While many of us here share the same dedication, what distinguishes me from the other candidates is my professional experience. I'm a principal in Nassau Boses, which serves students with physical and developmental disabilities from the 56 districts of Nassau County. I've been an educator and an administrator for students with disabilities for over 20 years. As a manager, I control a multimillion-dollar school budget, facilitate committees, analyze data, and implement cutting-edge curriculum and technology initiatives. I have hard conversations and make decisions daily, ensuring that we're looking at all the stakeholders in the process. I strongly believe in providing all students access to the highest-quality education and the importance of collaboration, transparency, and partnership. I believe that my professional knowledge and experience of how school systems work, as well as my many years of leading teams, uniquely positions me to be the best candidate for the Rockville Center School Board. My experience managing large budgets has given me the skills necessary to analyze and negotiate our budget issues in a fiscally responsible way for all.
Thank you. Mr. Spalding?
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My wife Linda and I have been married for 24 years, and we have four children, of whom two are in college and two are at Southside High School. My wife and I are both products of Rockville Center School District and are lifelong residents of the community. As a young adult in the village of Rockville Center, I learned the value of being a civic leader, which has continued through the past 40 years of my life. I am currently in my seventh year as a trustee on the Rockville Center Board of Education, and this is my fourth time running for election. I have worked with my fellow trustees and the administrators over the past seven years to improve and maintain our school programs and policies. I currently work for the Nassau County Fire Commission as a fire communications technician and a certified emergency medical dispatcher for the past 17 years in the Nassau County Emergency 911 Center in Westbury. I am also a member of the Rockville Center Fire Department, volunteering with Live Oil Engine Company Number One for the past 26 years. I have been very active in our schools for many years and have fought hard to make sure that our school tax dollars are used wisely. I continue to be concerned about our taxes, all of our school programs, our class sizes, and how our children and families are affected by changes in school policies. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the RVC PTA Council for this evening.
Thank you. And Ms. Stack?
Good evening. Thank you to the PTA Council and the League of Women Voters for running tonight's forum. My name is Liz Stack. I'm an educator, and I'm running for Board of Education because public education in Rockville Center is in danger. My children have been in Rockville Center schools since 2000, and I am dismayed by the changes in the schools since that time. Our education system is threatened on many fronts, but most significantly by Common Core, which is an ill-conceived and poorly implemented one-size-fits-all education reform which promotes standardization at the expense of special needs students, music, art, and theater programs. Common Core promotes a toxic testing culture that is lethal to true education. From the earliest grades, instruction is now geared towards testing, thereby depriving our students of the essential social, emotional, and physical development that comes with play, creative learning, and social interaction. Not too long ago in our community, there was controversy surrounding full-day kindergarten. People worried it would cut their children's playful childhoods short, and in many ways, it has, by focusing too heavily on testing and academic rigor at the expense of educating the whole child. But it doesn't have to be that way. I support multiple pathways to graduation to best serve unique learners in our district for whom homework and passing tests is a tremendous challenge. We need to explore varied paths to humanely meet all students where they are and better prepare them for the world beyond school. I have decided to run for Board of Education as I cannot sit idly by while these ill-advisory forms and abusive testing culture destroy our children and the public education system. Under Dr. Johnson's leadership, our schools have worked hard to resist this damage, but we need to go further. I would insist on transparency as a member of the board so our community can hold our education system accountable. Thank you so much, I look forward to your questions.
Thank you for the introductions. We will begin with the first question, and Mr. Fitzgerald, you will begin. The question is, how important do you think transparency is for the Board of Education? In the spirit of this transparency, please discuss specifics regarding your campaign finances, including how your campaign has been funded, and what you have spent your monies on, and what will happen with any funds raised that are in excess after your campaign.
Just to clarify, I have 90 seconds to answer that?
Yes.
Okay.
Be concise![975.81][975.81][laughing]
Transparency is paramount to a public servant working for you. As a board member, I pledge to you that I would work to the letter of the law, to adhere to New York's open-meeting law, which is actually well-written if anyone wants to read, actually well-written legislation. Our open-meeting law reads really well, and there are limited exceptions for when topics should be discussed outside of the public view. And I would vote and conduct myself in adherence to those exceptions. Regarding my campaign, that's actually very easy to answer. I am funding the campaign on my own, I got a specific budget from my wife, and I am trying to spend those dollars as best I can. I released my financial disclosure form over the weekend as this question was coming up online, and I've been fully transparent to the penny, to the vendors that I have paid, and there's no drama there. And I will pledge to you that I will release my financial disclosure forms, there'll be two more due, and I will release those to the public. When it comes to operating in a transparent and open way, I'd like to think I'm setting the standard as to what I'm doing with my campaign, who I'm engaged with, and how we're funding it.
Thank you. If you need the question repeated, I will do it, but Ms. Hackett, you're next.
I believe transparency is the only way to be a board member. Through my involvement as the PTA president of Hewitt, I took it upon myself to attend the board meetings regularly so that I could bring information back and forth to my unit effectively, and if there's one thing that I was vocal about over this time period was that exact issue, not hearing things from the board as a PTA president, going to district meetings, attending presidents' meetings, being on district committees, and finding them out in the Herald was not exactly my idea of transparency, and I've spoken out on that behalf. Regarding my own campaign, I'm also self-funding, and I had to give my husband a budget instead of him giving me one. We are self-funding. I do a lot of fundraising for Hewitt, and I have over the years for the Hewitt Fair, that's something that I've been largely involved with, and I decided that I would rather do fundraising on behalf of the kids, so I've decided to self-fund my campaign. My first sheet that I handed in was actually a zero balance, I had spent no money as of that point. Since then, for my second sheet, I will be noting down that I've spent money on my signs, a Facebook campaign, and one meet-and-greet that I had done by the next time, I have a couple of other meet-and-greets coming up that I will provide refreshments for. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNulty.
Thank you. Good evening. As the two first candidates said, I believe transparency is number one for being a board member, and going to board meetings and listening to things that have happened and finding out things in the Herald. I was concerned about the transparency and feeling that we weren't getting full stories, so I think that that's essential for any board member. In regards to my own campaign, I have been very lucky to have supportive friends and family, as well as myself, that have been funding my campaign, and we have paid for signs and postcards, and I am looking forward to putting that to the public with anyone that would be like to see that. That is going to be at central offices, you can email and ask me, you can actually get that. I really feel that I have been lucky to have support in regards to that, and I think that transparency is number one, and I will continue to do that throughout this campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spalding?
Transparency is extremely important. As a current board member, I have had discussions with all the board members with regards to transparency, with regards to how our information is relayed to the public. A lot of times, people have to foil information to get certain pieces or contracts, or how much we spent on certain things. It shouldn't be that way. You should be able to either listen, hear it at a board meeting, bring it up on your computer, click on it, and you should be able to see exactly the information that was discussed and exactly the information as far as the dollars and cents that were spent. As far as my campaign, I had a friend of mine call me the other day and said, "How come your signs say 'elect'? Aren't you the incumbent?" And I said, "Well, I'm reusing my signs."[1264.92][1264.92][laughing] This is the fourth time I'm doing this. So, at the end of every year, I box everything up and I put it in my garage, and I reuse my stuff. So, my first disclosure sheet had a big zero on it. I'm anticipating another zero on my next foreclosure.[1281.11][1281.11][laughing] Thank you.
I think transparency is extremely important when you're serving the community, you're serving the Rockville Center's schools. I think we, I, as a resident and taxpayer and parent of a child in the school, I do want to know how the board arrives at decisions and how they vote on things. I would like it if we could have more transparency in that regard, to know who votes yea, who votes nay, and how those things go down, especially in terms of senior hiring decisions, which is a controversy right now. In terms of financial disclosure, my first, I am completely self-funded, my husband and myself are, believe in this enough to really put our money on the line, and my first financial disclosure, we had not spent anything, and at this point, we've only spent money on signs, which you've seen around, the lawn signs, and a Facebook campaign. I think the current board can do better in terms of transparency. Again, I'd like to know how votes go down, I believe there needs to be some accountability in regards to those votes, and I believe there needs to be even a little bit more in terms of interaction and discussion and flexibility in terms of how those decisions are made.
Thank you. The next question is, what is your opinion of Common Core and the opt-out movement? What is your advice to parents? What do you feel is the solution? That's a three-part question. What is your opinion, a four-part, actually. What is your opinion of the Common Core and the opt-out movement? What is your advice to parents, and what do you feel is the solution? And we will begin with Ms. Hackett.
I think Common Core, on paper, sounded like a great idea. It was a way to raise our academic standards. It was rolled out prematurely, the testing was associated with it, and it unfortunately led to New York State producing an invalid test. The one good thing I will say that I feel about it as a parent is that it really reinvigorated parents' idea that they could be the advocates for their children, they could play a role in the decision-making when it came to their children taking tests that were not valid. So, I think this district's been supportive of children who take the test, and I think they're supportive of children who decide not to take the test, or of families who decide not to take the test. One of the greatest things about our district is that we have other assessments. So, for children who decided to opt out for the New York State test, it's not that they're not taking tests, they're not taking that test. The NWEA is a very good assessment, it's an adaptive model, we get live results from it within 24 hours, and the teachers are able to take that data and understand how the children are actually doing as they're progressing through their year. And this type of model, though I'd love to see it have a written component, I think is at least a way for us to understand how our children are actually doing versus testing that is not accurate or valid. I would tell parents that they should make those decisions per year for their individual children. I think that that's really important. I don't think we should just opt out as a trend for the rest of our lives, I think we need to wait till they catch up and take another look at it.
Thank you.
Being in education, I've gotten to read a lot and be involved a lot with Common Core. I don't believe that Common Core was rolled out correctly, I think that they pushed it too quickly, and I don't believe that all of the standards are truly developmentally appropriate for all of our children. So, I support the opt-out movement, and I think that it's important that parents have really been getting informed and being educated on this issue, and really learning the information that is out there. I don't believe that giving a test to students that assesses both teachers and students is valid, so I think that we need to look at a better way. I'm very happy to see that the state is looking into this and that we are looking at different ways and models to present a type of assessment to students. I think assessments are important, and I think parents need to know about assessments that are out there and what else can we do for our children. The NWA is a great assessment that we take here in Rockville Center, and it gives students the ability to show their strengths and skills, so I think that's really important, and teachers get a baseline, they get a beginning, and they get an ending, and they can teach to the students. So, for parents, I would say, please make sure that you educate yourselves, know about the programs that are out there, the assessments that we're taking. And I think for a solution, I think that we really need to listen to the state, I'm glad that they're up there looking, and we need to keep talking to our legislators and keep fighting to ensure that we see changes that we want.
Thank you. Next.
The Common Core, poor rollout, very poor rollout. They did not include any, or if they say they included teachers, to me, they did not include the teachers, as far as getting input on the types of questions and the material that was being presented to the children. So, they had very little teacher support as far as putting those questions together, which raised a lot of questions as to where the questions were coming from, and raised questions as to whether or not they were testing the children, or were they testing the teachers. The opt-out program, I support 100%. All four of my children have opted out of the program every single year. Now, they're in high school, so obviously, they can't opt out of the regions, because that's what they need for college. The NWEA, I support 100%. It's our solution to testing or evaluating our children so that the teachers know right away their strengths and their weaknesses, and the test actually allows them to go with the reading level that they're at. So, if you have a third grader reading at a sixth grade level or a second grade level, the test automatically adjusts to the reading level of the child and asks the appropriate questions so the teacher gets a better idea.
Thank you.
Obviously, I have a lot of problems with Common Core. On the elementary level, the standards are developmentally inappropriate. I believe on the secondary level in particular, but in the elementary level also, there is a preponderance of nonfiction texts and multiple-choice questions pertaining to them. I think there's less of an emphasis on writing and literature and fiction and creative writing and imagination and interaction and social play. I believe that the Rockville Center schools are actually dragged down by these standards. My oldest child is 23, he's now in law school, there was no Common Core, and my second son is 20, and our youngest is 13. The education and the art projects that were produced, there is a distinct difference between now and then. I know that Rockville Center schools have resisted this to a great extent, and the teachers in our district are amazing, but I would rather see Rockville Center schools be a model for what other schools can do and what works in other schools. Very proud that we have a very diverse community, not just diverse in terms of socioeconomic, but, you know, diverse learners for whom, you know, Common Core is not good. It's not good for English language learners, it's not good for special needs children, there isn't the differentiation as much involved with it. In terms of testing, when I, you know, five years ago, I was, my daughter Isabel is one of the first children to opt out of the test, I was an early adopter...
Okay, thank you. Time is up, sorry. I really am, you know... I, I really am, you know, I know you have many, many thoughts. But I have to give everyone an equal opportunity. Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald, you are the equal opportunity.
Ms. Simpson, could you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I answer it all.
Yes, I can. This is question number-
These multi-part questions, I feel like I'm in Rodney Dangerfield, back to school, so.
What is your opinion of Common Core and the opt-out movement? That's the first part. What is your advice to parents? And lastly, what do you feel is the solution?
Okay. So, I needed help with the vocabulary around this and after spending time with our professionals, there's basically three terms that you need to understand in order to have a discussion around Common Core. There's standards, there's curriculum, and then there's testing. So, when we talk about Common Core, everyone just kind of lumps all that in there together. But you have to break it apart. Common Core are standards and those are just the, whether you think they're developmentally appropriate or not, they're the set standards at the grade level or age level that the state believes our children should, should be at. I support Common Core standards. I support pushing our kids. There are kids in, you know, the parents in Japan aren't worried about developmentally appropriateness of, for their standards. We've got folks in Korea, China, people are chasing us. They are pushing their kids and the world is becoming a more competitive place. So, I, I support high standards for our kids. Now, how those are implemented though, is where we ran into some real problems with Common Core. Implementation was rolled out poorly. Implementa, the curriculum was rushed. The teachers didn't have adequate stand, didn't have adequate training, didn't have adequate materials, and we pushed it in, in a aggressive way and the kids paid for it. Third, on, and then the testing, testing do, or teaching to the tests and putting so much emphasis on a test, I think is inappropriate. I support the opt-out movement. A little dis, civil disobedience is usual, is not a bad thing. And my advice, and my solution would be to have the district work with the curricu, you know, select and work with the curriculum and have the teachers teach what they think is necessary to teach the standards.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, but must do that. The next question. With educational programs evolving and increasing, this is a long question. With educational programs evolving and increasing, how do you propose evaluating current programs to see if they are effective and proposed programs to see if they truly add value to, for our students? And within that, will you, will we be able to stay within the budget and still give our students an excellent education? So, it's educational programs present, educational programs that you're proposing or will be proposed, that they're both effective for the students of Rockville Center and can we afford them? That's about it in a nutshell. And first will be Ms. McNulty.
Great. So, evaluating current programs, we need to look at data and we need to see how students are performing in the current programs. What do the numbers look like? How successful are our students achieving in the programs? Thinking about bringing in new programs, we need to look at research and you need to look at data that is out there before we bring in programs that have proven not to be effective. We want to bring in programs that have proven to be effective in other school districts that we've seen. We want to make sure that we are able to do this within our budget, which is easy to do if we make sure that we put the time into researching and ensuring that we're bringing in things that have proven to be successful with the research. I can't stress enough that that's the importance. Being in education, this is what I do. I look at programs continually and I look at programs that are going to be successful for different learners. We need to ensure that we're looking to give access to all of our learners and we need to find programs that will reach every learner because all of our learners are individuals. So, if we put the time in and look at the research and find those programs, we will be able to do it in a fiscally way and ensure that we're making successful decisions for our students.
Next. Okay.
Well, I think we do an excellent job with our administrators to evaluate new programs that are presented to us. I'll give you an example, our robotics program, which is evolving into the high school, started in the middle school. So, that's a new program at the high school where they are able to, the administrators are able to take a look at other programs that were going on in the building and determine cost-cutting needs that they can, they can do in order to make the new program, which the students were looking for, to happen. As far as the funding, you know, the board usually turns to the budget to see if we have the money in the budget. If we don't have money in the budget, then we have to find it somewhere. And that usually depends on revenue and other factors as to whether or not other programs that are evaluated are, are, can be possibly, I guess, downgraded. Another example is our, our phys ed program. Our swim team, our boys swim team merged with the East Rockaway Swim Team. Cost-cutting effort by both East Rockaway and Rockville Center to keep their, their children involved, which is important. It's an important program to have a boys swim team, as well as our, our wrestling team. Our wrestling team at the high school merged with, I think, either, I think it's East Rockaway or Lynbrook. But with, with that in mind, they, it all goes back to saving money so that the programs can continue.
Thank you, Ms. Spalding.
Thank you.
Next.
Yeah, I think educational programs are evolving and I think they need to be responsive to the needs of children in our community. I think when you look at the Core Program, Core Two and RISE Program, you know, it's experimental at first and then you see that you do get people from out of district, you know, being involved in our district and the programs that we have. And I think sometimes you can tell if, if a program is successful based on, does it help all the pieces of the puzzle? Get through high school, get through the education system with something meaningful and exit something meaningful at the end of it, someplace that they can go from here. I think you need to see if, you know, whatever the programs may be, I think you need to see not just, you know, how much money do they cost? But also, you know, do they give each individual child something that they can connect to in that particular district? I think you can edu, you can evaluate programs. You can do it financially, but I think you can also look at it in terms of, are you, are you caring for, you know, the most vulnerable in the population? Are their needs being served? Are they getting a meaningful education? And I think that is something that you can, you can evaluate.
Thank you. Next.
I think there are both quantitative and qualitative ways to assess the efficacy of programs. I'd like to work with the administration to develop a metric. You know, airlines use cost per seat mouth flown. We should have some sort of, you know, cost per section or cost per pupil for section offered. Like, there's a way to boil down our financial commitment to programs in, in a way that we can compare across schools and across grades to understand what programs are frankly cheap and what programs are very expensive. And I think that's one important, but not sole, input into the equation. We also need to look at what qualitative measures there are. You know, if a kid takes a calculus class in high school, studies show their odds of completing high school, their odds of completing college increase 400%. So, that's not a financial metric and it's, you know, it's a studies. I'd, I'd say it's beyond an anecdote, but studies have shown that type of performance improvement if you offer that type of challenge to high school students. I would call that a successful program. If we think there are programs that aren't as effective, we should be humble enough to make course corrections and admit when something isn't working. That's frankly thing, something I do every quarter in, in my own professional life. We have to look at what's working, what's not working, and have the humility, have the judgment, have the respect of our peers to admit when we need to make course corrections.
Thank you. Next.
When it comes to evaluating programs, you know, we can't be afraid to talk to the people who are actually implementing them. So, there has to be such a connection to our teachers first and foremost. You know, one way to try programs are to pilot them. We've done that with math programs a couple of years back and I think that that's a really important way to try something before you buy it. I caution about looking at our programs as cost per pupil. I, I don't believe that we're running a business here. We're running a school district and we need to look at what's best for the children. So, sometimes we have to put some more money into a program and sometimes we're going to produce programs that will also generate revenue. So, we're going to have different experiences in different ways. But I think that getting ahead of things and being more proactive about our program evaluations and program implementation is better than being reactive. We don't want the parents to, to start demanding that our children have X, Y, and Z in our district. We should be getting ahead of that as a Board of Education. We should be listening to our teachers and we have wonderful administrators here and they know what they're doing and they're in the classroom with the children every day. So, again, I caution that we don't view this as, as the same way we would view a business model. We have to look at this as an education and we're looking out for the children. So, I would tap into the many, many resources that we have and evaluate what we have and let's be proactive and bring in some new things and pilot them.
Thank you. The next question is, special education partners believe the practice of furnishing certification documents in lieu of diplomas to special education students unable to pass Regents exams is unacceptable. It fails to recognize their true grasp of the curriculum and it deprives them of appropriate recognition to pursue their futures. As a Board of Education member, what would you do to secure the students, these students, the needed path to attain their diplomas? Okay, and we're going to begin with Mr. Spalding.
Thank you. Our special education partners, I believe we had a, a forum at the high school and we were discussing this very topic. And my, my feeling on this is that we need to work more with the state and I believe the state is working to, currently towards changing a lot of these documents so that our special ed children will be all able to graduate with a local diploma. And I think it is the local diploma that they're looking for. They're not looking for a, a certificate. They're looking to, to get what a lot of people got, you know, back in, at least when I went to school. It was a diploma. You had a diploma, you had a Regents diploma. Now, there's a lot of high-end diplomas. You have the, the advanced Regents diploma. You have the, the IB diploma. And they should at least have a path to secure a, a local diploma. I support this. I think the school board needs to continue to work with the state to make sure that this happens.
Next. Ms. Stack.
I'm sorry. I believe that the practice of CDOCs is, is unfortunate. I think that there are a lot of people in the special needs community who may have various different talents. I know there was an article recently about how Microsoft and SAP, for example, have a whole unit of hiring, you know, people on the autistic, on the autism spectrum to do coding and programming. And I think that we should be able to have a program in the high school that can, you know, meet those needs of those students so that they can have a meaningful diploma when they leave here. I did speak up at the education forum in regards to this. When I went to high school, like many of you in the audience, we had a Regents diploma and a diploma. It was considered an honors designation at that time. Teaching throughout New York City and Long Island schools. You know, we went from having RCTs and local diplomas and that enabled a lot of students to go on to, you know, associate, get associate degrees or college degrees, to go into trades and various different other outlets. Right now, the students cannot go into the armed services. They can't do a lot of things that, you know, people used to be able to do, graduating with that local diploma. So, I would be in support of that and I would work with the state. It is a state issue, the Regents issue. I would continue to work with the state as a board member to be a leader in that regard.
Next.
I think it's absolutely ridiculous we can't offer a local diploma to those that are most vulnerable and those most in need. It's just, it's flat ridiculous and we need to work with our representatives in Albany to ensure that we get the adequate legal authority to offer that type of diploma. What's afforded now is not enough. You can, supposedly, you can get a Regents diploma if you have an IEP and you have to take two of the Regents exams and those are, and you can pass them with lower scores. But we have children in the district with IEPs, children in the, in the district with developmental issues that where those tests, even at a lower passing rate, are incredibly difficult. And the fact that we spend $30,000 a child and we can't give them a local diploma, I just find offensive. So, we need to work with our state legislatures, legislators to enact that type of change. Let the market decide what a Rockville Center local diploma is worth, similar to what private schools offer. Because a private school can offer a local diploma, I don't see why we can't.
Thank you. Next.
One of the things I've learned from working as a SEP rep for Hewitt is that, you know, there's, we have a very diverse SEP population as well. This is not a, a group of people that all have the same exact needs. So, again, looking at every child individually is very important. And I know that the parents want their children to graduate, of course, with a diploma. I think the paths of getting them there is important and I think where they're going next is also very important. You know, we talk so much about our, our rigorous IB program and getting kids college-ready. Not every child is going to go on to college. So, we also need to prepare children for life. We need to prepare children for career, whatever path they choose, whether it's college, career, or life skills. So, I recommend putting some life skill electives into special ed program, letting them learn things that will help them after they graduate with hopefully a diploma from Southside. But I don't think just getting them a diploma is the answer. I think it's preparing them for life. Part of the problem is that they're missing out on some of these other kind of electives because they're working so hard in getting special help in some of their subjects that they're, they're not able to partake in some of the, the other things that are available to them. And I think it's important that we make sure these children are having the full experience like everybody else and when they graduate high school with whatever diploma they can hopefully graduate with, because I hope we can get them all the diploma and I agree with Wayne about that, that we are getting them ready for their lives.
Thank you. Okay, next.
I believe that it's essential that we provide alternative pathways for all children and that is something that we definitely need to look at and improve upon in our Rockville Center schools. I agree with the candidates before me, Bill Tara and Wayne, in regards to we need to offer other programs for all of our children and give them access to the ability to obtain a local diploma. So, I think that it's really essential. I feel that I would like to bring my experience working with special ed, I'm speaking to superintendents, speaking to state legislators about different opportunities we can provide to all students. And I would like to use my experiences here in Rockville Center to bring those ideas here because I think that we need to add some of these programs for all of our students and ensure that our high school students are getting to where they need to be because not everybody's going to go to college. And we do need to prepare them for life and for careers and for other options outside of high school.
Okay. Are we finished with that question? Yes? Oh, fantastic. The next question is on a different, different. People complain about lack of differentiation in class availability through high school. Many districts have gifted and talented programs starting in elementary school while we do nothing to address the academic needs of our highest-performing students. What are your thoughts on growing our district so that it addresses both kids with additional learning needs and kids who are gifted? Got that? That's a long question, but it has a lot of important information for your audience. I think you go first, don't you?
I think Ms. Stack.
Ms. Stack, yes.
You know, one of the challenges of being a teacher in the classroom is of course trying to meet all the needs of every student in the class and their different learning needs, their different talents, their different backgrounds. But, you know, it, it is very important to try to do that and there are obviously many ways to do that. In terms of talented, gifted programs, Rockville Center Schools, I think, has- In terms of talented gifted programs, Rockville Center Schools, I think, has tried to kind of work at a different approach to avoid, you know, tracking, which I very much appreciate, and to do more of an inclusion. But I think that there are, you know, and I think there are issues in areas where there are good programs that can meet the needs of gifted children and academically, you know, students who perhaps are more academically high achieving. The IB program is, of course, one of those programs. For some, it may come a little too late as a junior, you know, year in high school program. And so that could possibly be something that can be looked at. I think we have great art, theater, music programs. I think our music program and art program are incredible in our theater programs. So I, I'm very appreciative of that. Many children with many different talents can afford themselves of those. And I'd also like to see the programs, the RISE program, Core Program and things like that. I'd like to see that continued also so that children can have their educational and creative needs met. So I would be, you know, supportive of that.
Thank you. Next.
I'll just be honest with everybody. I'm actually very conflicted about this question. Growing up, I was on an advanced track in school. It was at times a source of pride and something to continue to strive to in order to meet the standards that were laid out. I always wanted to take the hardest test. And, and that worked for me. Studies over the last 20 years have shown though, and our administration has been advocating this, that if you track kids even of the same potential, so if you take 10 high-performing kids and you separate them and you tell five that they're going to be on the average, they're going to just take a normal track, and you take five and you put them on an advanced track, the five on the advanced track will rise to the occasion and the five on the average track will, will meet that lower expectation regardless of potential and regardless of their prior academic achievement. So the idea in the high school, as I've, as I've come to learn, is that we don't have multiple tracks because we're going to push everyone into the hardest, into the harder curriculum. We're going to give support to the students that need it and by doing so, we're going to set high standards for all and push them. I get that. But the, but the world is not seeing that necessarily as a good thing and our parents aren't necessarily seeing that as a good thing. So as a board member, I'd actually like to spend some time with Dr. Johnson, Superintendent Pelletieri, and Mr. Murphy to actually spend a little more time looking at tracks and making sure we're choosing the right path and make a course correction if we need to.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was looking at questions. Next.
I'm going to go back to a comment I made earlier, which is that school does not begin in the later year programs. We have to start taking a look at our elementary schools and that's something that I definitely bring to the table, having two children in, at Hewitt right now. I think the IB program's wonderful, it's rigorous, it's, you know, we're trying to get children on that track of, to prepare them. But again, that doesn't start in seventh grade. We have to get these kids on these tracks earlier in. You know, where I grew up in Oceanside, we had a project extra program. It was a full-day program once a week and kids came in from other schools. And we did a variety of different puzzles and logic problems and matrices and things like that and it was wonderful. I don't propose that that's the exact way to go because I know that that's an expensive program, not something you're going to go into lightly. But I think that there's a way to kind of find a happy medium and work some of these accelerated programs into our curriculum. One thing that I would suggest doing is really increasing our professional development with our teachers and finding ways so that we don't have children that are coming home and saying, "I got in trouble today because I got my work done too early and I had nothing to do. I'm not challenged. I'm taking work from the extra bin and this is how I'm spending the extra time I have." You know, we have these NWA results, we're seeing where children are falling in their age group and we can identify some of these accelerated children at an early age and we should be capitalizing on that. We shouldn't be waiting until they get to the later schools to have them go into those more rigorous programs. I think our teachers are capable of doing that.
I think that in Rockville Center, what we've looked at is we've looked at our seller program as an enrichment program in the elementary schools, but I think that we need to do a little bit of a better job. I think that we need to see what we can do, programs we can add for those students that need to be pushed. And I think we have phenomenal teachers in Rockville Center that do work to differentiate and we need to ensure that they are continuing to do that with all of the students throughout the district. We want to make sure that we are seeing these programs in every school. Some of the schools we go to, Wotton, and I know that we have early morning enrichment and we have students participating in that type of a program. That should be happening everywhere. And it's something that I would definitely advocate for is to ensure that we are having these programs across all of the schools that are going to affect all of our children. I think that we do lack differentiation in areas and we need to do that especially with the younger kids moving up. I believe that our IB program is a very rigorous and excellent program for students, so we need to get students prepared for that. We have the middle years program in the middle school and I think we need to introduce things into the elementary schools to get our students prepared for those programs.
Thank you. Next.
I'm going to ask you to repeat the question.
Yes, I would be glad to repeat the question. People complain about the lack of differentiation in class availability through high school. Many districts have gifted and talented programs starting in elementary school while we do nothing to address the academic needs of our highest performing students. What are your thoughts on growing our district so that it addresses both kids with additional learning needs and kids who are gifted?
Thank you. I believe we do have many programs in the elementary, middle school, and high school that are advancing the needs of our programs, but there's not doing it fast enough. Couple of years ago, we were looking at other schools offering science and engineering courses and robotics came into the picture as well as additional programs that could be offered to the high school. Looking at different ways of introducing some of these programs, tweaking our current curriculum, trying to work in some of these, these programs into some of our curriculum in the high school. So they are trying to work on that and I give them a lot of credit for trying to incorporate that, not only just into the curriculum, but the time and effort into the teachers to learn some of the materials. As far as college courses, I believe that we should do more with offering college-level courses or availability for some students who are overachie, that, that can handle taking a college-level course at a local university. They should be available to take those courses for engineering and possibly even foreign language studies.
Okay, next. Okay. The next question is, class balancing originated due to the fact that the district wanted to use its resources evenly across all the schools. Do you support this? If not, how do you propose to reconcile the number of children in each class?
I'm so glad that question was asked as class balancing was the, was the topic that kind of drew me into this. I thought the class balancing committee and the work that they did in the most recent, in the most recent version of the policy was good work and, and I thought we were, we were actually pretty close to having something that I found acceptable. The issue I have with class balancing is gerrymandering larger classes at elementary schools. It happened, it almost happened to Riverside last year and as I understand it, it happened to Hewitt several years, several years ago, there was a controversy there. I don't think the policy should reduce the number of sections at a school. We should let demographics decide and it just, it is what it is. If you're at, we should use 25 as a factor and if you're at 76 kids, you get four sections. If you're at 26 kids, you get two sections. If you're at 49 kids, you get two sections. It's simple. It does not allow, the policy itself does not force schools into larger class sizes. It's fair and at that point then, parents can make a decision, do I want to, do I want to enroll my kid in a, in a, in a, in a school where they're going to be in a class of 25 and they get a TA and it works and people are pleased with that? Or do I want the option then to send my child to a school where we've got 19 kids or 18 kids or 14 kids? But we give that choice to the parent.
Thank you. Next.
I believe I was the only candidate up here that served on that class balancing committee and I will tell you that it's not as simple as that. You do not always have the option to just split at 76 when the facilities at the school do not allow for an extra classroom. So those things had to be taken into consideration and that was our job as the committee members. There was a representative from every elementary school. Their job was to bring the needs of that school and be your ambassador for your school, take the old policy, rip it apart and handle it flaw by flaw of what went wrong the last time. And there were things that went wrong the last time and Hewitt was the school that probably suffered the most because kids were taken out. We would have had a split because we had the classroom to have it. So knowing that not every school is a one-size-fits-all, we had to come up with the best policy we could to take that into consideration. Numbers fluctuate and our facilities are what they are. So Riverside and Hewitt said, "We want to be receiving schools. We have the space. We want to take the children." And I believe the class balancing policy was going to help drive people to the smaller school and I think that that's where there was a misunderstanding about the policy. We never created a policy to try to drive students away from the smaller school. We tried to drive students to the smaller school. Unfortunately, the policy was shut down. I'd like to take it back to committee. I know other people feel that way and I think we should have a chance at finishing the good work that we started. It might not be perfect, but I think it was in a good place and I think it's important to balance those resources across the district.
Thank you. Next.
Class sizes are always an issue that repeatedly comes up to the board. I was very happy when I heard that they were forming this committee and really taking representatives from every school in the district. I thought that gave an opportunity for everyone to get together to speak and talk about the things that worked and don't work with the policy. I was surprised and really taken aback that it was really shut down so quickly. And I think that it's really important that we take time as a board to revisit this and to look at this. I think that the committee would be, it would be important for the committee to go back and take a look at the policy because we need to make sure that we are being equitable across, across the district and we need to look at things fiscally, make sure that we're making sound decisions. And sometimes it's more, it looks, it comes out different than you think when you're working on the committee.
Thank you. Next.
Currently, I do not support the class balancing policy as it stands. The committee did an amazing job in reviewing the policy. The policy had issues in several schools. Parents were complaining and the Board of Education took note of that and took the initiative to bring the class balancing policy to a committee, which did a lot of work on it. But the end result, when it came back to the board, there were still parents that still had issues. So I'm receptive to handing it back to a committee to try and work out the issues if they can work them out. But I think the greater problem that we're having is, you know, we have classes in our school district that are not all the same size. We have to look at the square footage in the room, we have to look at the number of the adults that are in the room and we have to determine whether or not, you know, 25, 24, 27, 22 is the appropriate number. And we need to work with our building administrator, our principal, to determine what's the appropriate number for those sized classes. So I don't think that was incorporated into the class balancing. I think some other concerns that some of the building administrators have with, weren't incorporated and we probably need to take it back to committee or go back to the old way it was being done for the last, I don't know, 40 or 50 years.
Okay. Ms. Stack?
I know, you know, I'm looking at the enrollment by school grade and sections for the coming year and it's, it's, you know, it's something that is subject to change. People come into a district at all times, you know, without necessarily being planned and I know it's a major issue. You know, I think at this point, we want to try to make sure that there are, you know, that for the most part, everyone attends their neighborhood school. You know, whenever that's possible, I think that's the way to go. I think you also have to, of course, balance though, you know, staffing, you have to balance physical space, you have to balance, you know, you have to be fair to the children in the entire district. I think there's a hope that we will have new families in our, in our community and that, that will help sort out some of the issues regarding receiving schools and sending schools so that, you know, certain schools will have a little bit more of a balance just naturally as a result of that. So we're, I think there's a hope that that will remedy a lot of these issues, but I think for the most part, you want to make sure that small schools are receiving and that they're not losing enrollment and that they are having, you know, more sections so that you can have, you know, a more rich, full school experience.
Thank you. The next question is, what is your position on abolishing or reevaluating the IB program given Rockville Center's school standings, which dropped to 145 in the state? I will start with you.
I, I have to just comment on the ranking. Just if you've read the articles, the reason we're not featured as high up as we, well, you know, lower down to number one as we had been in the past was because IB just did not release the data. The reason we didn't fall off the list is because we do offer some AP courses, so that kept us in certain criteria that kept us on the list, just not where we would have been. If you do the formula and the criteria, then we would have been on the list and been probably better or higher than we were last year. I don't, I would never look to abolish a program like IB. I think that it's, has a lot of good things going forward. I think that we're trying to create a high standard of learning and we're trying to scaffold children up to be able to partake in that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that that one has anything necessarily to do with the other. I don't think because we have an IB program, we didn't make that list. So I just want to clarify that. What I'm more concerned about is that we are putting so much onus on being ranked. I don't think that that's what makes us value our children's education. These lists are put out, you know, for profit. So of course they're making money off of them. That's not my largest concern. My largest concern is how we're treating every individual child. So when the criteria fits and we get on a list, of course, we'd love to be there and that's wonderful, but if we don't, I don't think that that's how we should be putting the number one regard on our children's education.
Okay. Next.
I would not look to abolish the IB program. The IB program is a very rigorous program and it really does prepare students to be college-ready. And if you talk to students that are in college that have taken the IB program, they will really say positive things and say that they were very prepared to be in college and it really helped them to be where they are. I think that what we need to do is to ensure that we are scaffolding for all of our children and I think that we need to be able to build in support in the IB program so that we're giving access to every child and really reaching each child's individual need. In regards to the rankings, I think that it is really important to think about that and to think about who's writing the rankings and where they're coming from. I do understand that when we think about rankings, we think about property values and we want to be a desirable community to live in and when we look at our rankings, it looks like our schools are number one and people want to come live in Rockville Center because that's where our schools are. But I think that we need to look beyond that and we need to really realize that we want to do what's best for our kids and we want to give them programs that are going to prepare them to go to colleges. It's really important where our children are going to go on to from school, whether it's college, career, but we want them to go good places. And I think that this program will help to get them there. So I think that that's really important and not having the information from the IB department really did cause our rankings to fall, so we need to think about that.
The IB program is a wonderful program. Over the last seven years, we've expanded the program into the middle years program in the middle school. We've also been able to offer additional offerings in the IB program at the high school. And doing away with the program because they didn't release their information to a, the US News and Report ranking our, our schools is a crazy thought. We, a lot of time, a lot of energy goes into every piece of curriculum that our school district works on. It works together very nicely and it builds upon each other. We're building from the, from the elementary all the way up to the high school and the middle years program builds on what, what they eventually end up in the high school. Maybe, I guess maybe the next step is up in the high school. Maybe, I guess maybe the next step is to have IB offered more in ninth and tenth grade, so it doesn't just start in eleventh grade. And we continue to have the support for the kids that are not IB students. You know, college and career readiness is not all about just IB. IB has a lot of benefits. It gives students the benefits and the challenge they need when they go to college. And a lot of students come back who are not IB students and say, you know, "That IB history class that I took was really helpful," or "The IB English that I took was extremely helpful. It allowed me to advance into a higher-level course, which I wouldn't have normally been able to take." So I am all for the program. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I'm a supporter of the IB program. My two older sons, you know, took IB classes in different levels. My older son took classes. My second son did the full diploma. He is now graduating a year early from college as a result of the credits that he got on those, you know, from those IB classes. And not, not only for like sevens, you know, I think colleges really do look at, you know, the rigor of coursework that is taken. And from my perspective, as both a teacher, as a tutor from schools all around Long Island, it is an incredibly rigorous program. I think it's great that it's a global program. I think that it's, you know, it really does build connections to languages and the world and economies all around the world. I do believe it does need to have supports for children. When it's mandatory for IB English and junior year for everyone, I think that, you know, can be an issue. But I just want to say that I like the whole IB program. I think the strongest thing it has going for it is its writing. I think Rockville Center schools generally have a great writing program, and you really see that at the IB with their, they do a major research paper. And I've been a college teacher, and a lot of students come into college, they don't, they don't have those skills. And I know our children do. So I think it's a great thing about the IB program.
I would not abolish the IB program. I would want to partner with administration and, and the building, Mr. Murphy and his team, to look at adjustments that need to be made. And we've discussed that as far as the, the tracking of students. Like it or not, I think Sue makes a good point that, you know, these ratings matter. They may not matter to those in education circles, but they matter to people choosing to live in Rockville Center over Garden City, over Manhasset, over Great Neck. People want to know they're living in a district with top-level, first-class, best-in-class schools. And like it or not, the ratings matter. So one solution that hasn't been said, which would be my first question, is why is IB making this difficult? Why aren't we squeezing IB to release the data? Why are they not collecting the appropriate data in order to fulfill the requests from the rankers? Why are we not squeezing the publishers and the rating, and the folks doing the ratings to incorporate IB data as to what's available? Why are we being defensive on this point rather than proactive, reaching out to these institutions and frankly, putting the squeeze on them? The IB program, you know, is, is a world program. It does great work. It prepares our kids for college. And Mr. Murphy and his team have, have a tremendous amount of data that shows the, the kids get to college well-prepared. It's something we need to keep, but we need to hold those, we need to hold IB to the same standard we hold our kids. And they need to perform just like our kids perform.
Okay, thank you. The next question is a two-part question. What are you looking for in our next superintendent? If you had to pick the next superintendent, what characteristics and traits and educational prowess would you be looking for? And what skills do you bring to the table in selecting such a candidate that will assure our growth and success?
So a part of the board is hiring the next superintendent. That is an extremely, extremely important job that I take very seriously and one of the reasons that I'm running and acting as a candidate now. I think that in the next superintendent, we are looking for someone that is an instructional leader. We are looking for someone that makes decisions, that is able to have hard conversations, that is a manager. We need somebody that has experience in understanding how successful districts run. We need somebody that knows the philosophy of the Rockville Center School District, somebody that is looking out for all of our children. These are going to be really important qualities that we are going to be looking for in the next superintendent. Being in education, one big job that I did was I opened brand-new schools. In doing that, I had to hire over two-hundred staff by myself. I had to create systems, protocols, and processes to hire educational staff. I believe that in doing that has given me extreme skills to be able to help and run the search for the next superintendent. We need to listen to our community members and talk to them about what's happening in the community and things that they would like to see in the next superintendent, because I think it's important that all stakeholders take part in the process in hiring who our new superintendent will be.
Our next superintendent should be an educator, a leader, a manager, an extremely outgoing individual who takes ownership of our programs, willing to try new programs, not afraid to answer questions, or afraid to relay to the board their personal feelings as to whether or not programs are working or not working. They need to, how do I say this? Be Dr. Johnson. He has been a perfect example of the leader that we need. And it's going to be an extremely difficult shoes to fill. My skills that I bring, the past seven years of being on the school board, we have had, we have attended conferences, where we attended what topics to look for when doing searches for superintendents. We've also had the opportunity to do evaluation on the superintendent. So what are their strengths, their weaknesses? And it's going to be extremely important to find out the, the energy level of the new person that is selected, whether or not they can fill those shoes. And that's going to be based on my past seven years. Thank you.
Next.
I, I, you kind of stole my answer, Greg.
Sorry.
I was, when I was thinking, what, what traits in our next superintendent, I was literally making a list of our current superintendent, Dr. Johnson. It will be very difficult to find someone to, to bring us into the future, because Dr. Johnson is an educational leader. He has integrity. He's a great communicator. He has vast administrative skill, knowledge, and experience with budgets. He has knowledge of funding sources and creative funding sources. But mostly, I think, and most important for me, is that he has a joy of working with children, and he's an incredibly caring person. What, what traits or skills can I bring to that? I think my educational background, my knowledge of pedagogy, my knowledge of classroom experience, my knowledge and background as a caring educator. I will be on the lookout for those kind of qualities. But again, I know that it won't be easy to do that. And, you know, I would like to see if we could keep Dr. Johnson as long as it takes to find that person. And I would hope that we could even have a mentoring shadow situation so that Dr. Johnson can pass, pass on some of that vast educational and administrative skill to the job for the next superintendent.
Okay.
I think the next contract that we sign for a superintendent needs to be with Dr. Johnson for several more years. And at the end of that, when we go to start looking for his replacement, I think we need to find someone with a track record of success leading a district. I don't think we should take a flyer on, on junior talent. We need an experienced administrator and an experienced superintendent who will come in and can take, and can hit the ground running under the, you know, in the RVC way from day one. They need to be well-credentialed. They need to have a track record in management and fostering good labor relations with various bargaining units. They need to be someone that wants to make a life here in Rockville Center. I think one of the wonderful benefits that Dr. Johnson has given to the community is stability. Stability in his role, stability at the top of, you know, as the, as the captain of the ship. And, and that stability has brought tremendous benefit to the community, where we don't have the drama of, of a rotating door or revolving door of superintendents. And finally, I'd like to see a track record of how this person protects and looks out for the most vulnerable in whatever position that they have been in, as I think it's a true mark of character as to how we treat the most vulnerable. What I bring to the table, I'm a pretty good interviewer, and I, I can snuff out fluff and, and get a read of people pretty well. So I bring that and good judgment to the table.
I'm curious as to if Dr. Johnson's the perfect person for the job, then why we are not extending his contract? I know we're not privy to information, but I would question that first and foremost. We have a superintendent. We have somebody who wants to work with us. And I would question why we are looking elsewhere at a premature time. Whether, you know, this is a three-year term, so whether it happens in a year or three years. What I bring to the table is probably the most relatable experience to this particular issue. When I worked at Hofstra, I was tasked by the provost to work ahead of our president's retirement and to do all the research to form a search committee for a new president. We did that way in advance, and we put out a well-thought-out plan and had a national search firm come in and work with that. So I have experience there. And then I have three years of human resources experience with hiring, recruiting, interviewing. And I think I'm a very good judge of character. I understand the way these things should go because I've worked at the university level and also in corporate America. And the most important thing is that the search firm that is brought in to find the replacement when we're ready for the replacement is that they need to have focus groups. They need to be talking to parents, administrators, students, and the community. And these decisions need to reflect what the community needs. And that's where I think that we have an issue with this kind of whole question. Did this decision reflect the needs and desires of the community?
Okay. All right. I think we're going to probably have two more questions, and then you'll have an opportunity for your summation. This one involves students. While there is extra help at academic intervention services, as well as remedial support for students who require this additional help, in our school, there is currently no gifted or accelerated help program for students who may require additional challenges to the curriculum, who may face these additional challenges. Do you think that is fair, and would you change it? You didn't understand the question?
Yeah, we answered that.
We did a similar question.
We've already answered it.
I think it's been pretty well answered. I don't think that we can, I really don't like to be, talk, I can't talk about personnel. And I think your candidates have answered what they, how they feel and what they will do if they are elected. Okay, all right. Then guess what? There'll only be one more question. And I, the question that was asked from the audience is, how is, how important is transparency in the Board of Education? I've expanded it. What can you tell us how you as a board member will address transparency? Because I'm incorporating several of your questions. Transparency, budget prep, and the many meetings that you will have to attend as a board member and as a family member.
I'm sorry, transparency, budget prep, and what was the rest of that?
You want me to repeat it?
Yes.
No, this is, you did transparent, excuse me. I don't want to stop it. I'd like to give them an opportunity to tell you what they're going to do for you. But I am, I've kind of summarized, there are a lot of questions here. I've probably gotten forty-five or fifty questions. And what I have done is that these items seem to be important for them to address. If you don't want them to, then I'll just go ahead to the summation. But I thought that you might like to hear that when they become a board member, how will they address the problems that you're concerned about? Budget prep, community participation, meetings, how will they be able to attend them properly, and will they promote transparency? Can you answer that? Or do you want to pass that on and do your summations?
No, let's answer it.
Is that mic up?
Let's answer it, yeah.
Am I the next one?
You have the next one.
All right. I believe the transparency question has been, has been answered. I believe that we should be more transparent and look at more ways of making things transparent for the residents in the district. As far as budget prep, the school board, every year, works on their, their greatest project, and that's the budget. We have this tax cap that kind of limits us in everything that we do, whether it's labor negotiations or if it's, every piece of the school district encompasses that two percent cap, and it encompasses the budget. And that's the first decision. Do we go over or stay under the budget? So once that question has been answered by the board, then we proceed to go through whether or not, how, how it's going to be prepared, which is done at the board meetings, and all the budget material is presented at the board meetings, including in fine detail. Community participation, always. I believe a hundred percent the community should be involved in everything from selecting the next superintendent. And one of the worst things I heard, I read the Newsday, where Hempstead got a new superintendent, and all the people in the audience were screaming that they weren't involved. That's wrong. The community needs to be involved in these types of decisions, as well as other decisions that we make, including some of the policies that we work on. Meetings are continued to be open and will, should remain open. Thank you.
Yeah, transparency, again, you know, is, is important. There has to be a trust that people on the board are working in the best interests of the community, and for children, students in the community. In terms of budget prep, I would, you know, I, I, as a resident, as a parent, as a resident, I would want to make sure that the budget is providing the services that our community needs and working within our limitations and being sensitive to our tax burden. I would be interested to see if we could save some money in places like the tests. I would like to save money on those tests. As far as community involvement, I love attending concerts and art projects, you know, art exhibitions, and going into the schools and volunteering for the book fairs and the bicycle safety day and all the events in the community. I love it. As a teacher, as a parent, I love to see the evolution of children in the music program. You know, I love it when they start out, ee, 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 and then there are amazing orchestras, like we saw at Thoroughly Modern Milli the other night. I love being involved in the schools. I have been a lifelong educator and, and as a parent, it's something that I very much love, and it's probably the most attractive part of the job for me. I look forward to being involved in that respect, and I look forward to contributing in that way to the Board of Education.
Transparency has been one of the cornerstones of my campaign. And I would encourage everyone to go to fitz2017.com, and you can read a primer on the open meeting law. You can read my views on transparency and the deficiencies that I've seen in the board over the last couple of years, and get a full, you know, understanding or a full appreciation of some of the issues that I've been, I've been passionate about. You can also go to my Facebook page, where a week ago, I participated in a, in an hour, hour-and-a-half Q and A with members of the public. It's still posted there, just as it was, a live Q and A, where a lot of these questions came up, and you can see exactly what my views have been. And this is kind of a potpourri question, so I'm going to hit just the topics real quick. On the budget, at some point, I think we need to do a zero-based budget, where we rebuild the budget from, from the ground up, looking at actuals from the prior year and, and doing a, a full study. I, it's my understanding that that's not happening every year, and I think we ought to do a zero-based budget to, you know, to, to refine and hone our numbers. As far as community participation is concerned, I think the community should be involved in everything. One of the frustrations I had with the class balancing committee is that it was a closed process. process and the committee was not invited or was not chosen. It was just a PTA presidents and board and administration function. That was a committee I would have served on if I'd been given the opportunity or the ability to attend. So I think community participation is key to us maintaining the trust as your board.
Just to kind of define, we're not just PTA presidents. I think that we are volunteers, we're people that take a lot of time and are representatives of our schools, and that's part of the job. And going to these meetings and listening and understanding what's happening on multiple levels is a really important job, and I wouldn't reduce it. I think that part of the problem that we've had this year is communication and transparency. I think that they've done a good job of giving us really great budget analyses. If you go to the board meetings, you can look at the line-by-line item and pie charts and all kinds of information that's available to you as the public for how they do the budgets. You know, using a zero-based budget is going to be very time and resource intensive, and it's not going to account for some of the rolling things and the investments that we've made into our school district. So I would definitely caution against something like that. On the other end, transparency that did not work as well this year was about Dr. Johnson's contract. There was a lack of time between when the public heard that information and when it was, you know, said in an executive session where no public members were attending. So that was a concern of the public. And the class balancing policy, though people can, you know, say that it needed more work, and I agree, we could have gone back to the table, it was shut down and we weren't able to talk about it anymore. And I think the board is not, should not take the position to shut down the public. Communication needs to work both ways, and you need to listen and you need to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that transparency is what brought so many candidates out to run this year. I think that people were concerned about what went on with Dr. Johnson and the question around transparency, what's going on with class balancing. And I think people started to put their ears up and started to say, hey, I think that we might need more transparency, we need better communication. And I think that's why you see so many of us sitting up here today. In regards to the school budget, I think that the district does a really good job in showing us how line-by-line they break out the budget. School budgets are different than business budgets, and going to a zero-based budget is going to give time and resources and not necessarily save us anything. So I think we need to think about that. In regards to community involvement, I think it's really important that all stakeholders are part of the process. I think that we need to ensure that the community is educated. You need to go out and hear what's happening in the district. In regards to meetings, it's really important that we are at the meetings as board representatives. As being an educator, a lot of this I am doing on my daily days, so I'm reading articles and learning about things in education. So I think that that's a natural transition for me, to really be able to attend meetings, bring new ideas, and be part of the board. Thank you.
Okay, now, there is one last question, okay? And it's an important one, so I, and I think your audience would like to hear your comments on this. And then it'll be time for Ms. Stack to begin the summation, but this last question, it's kind of important because it deals with students, and that's your main job. What do you feel are issues facing students? Internet safety, such as internet safety, social media, and the many other issues, social issues that they face? How will you keep our kids safe in a digital age? And that's the question. How will you keep the kids safe in a digital age?
You know, I think one of the ways you keep children safe in a digital age is by building their early childhood education in such a way that they value themselves, they value the connections that they have with each other, they are sensitive and compassionate in relation to bullying. I think that students today and young people today have, you know, a lot of anxiety. I think a lot of that is stemming from the testing culture, which, as you know, I'm not a fan of. And I would certainly try to fight, you know, what I see as their damaging effects. I think that you do have to cultivate a less competitive situation among your children, you know, again, in the earlier years, so that they aren't as, you know, competitive and bullying in relation to each other. I mean, parental controls, obviously, parents have to know what the technology is and they have to be engaged in it, and they have to have communication with their children in terms of that. But, you know, the digital age is the future, it is, technological world is there for them. I think you just have to teach them that it is a tool. In places like Finland, we're often compared to Finland, you know, technology is a tool there. It isn't, they have a screen and they're so dependent on it, and I would like to see a return to that. I would like to see us use technology in a way that, you know, improves our lives, obviously, but it isn't something that we have no other, you know, ability to do things with.
I think education begins at home. And children reflect the values and spirit and behavior of their parents. If their parents lack empathy, if their parents are competitive, if we have, you know, toxic sport environments, if folks are pushing their kids, we're creating a lot of these issues. Kids emulate the parents. So bullying is something that is taught from an early age. Being kind is something that's taught from an early age. Being empathetic is something that's taught from an early age. And so to protect our kids in the digital age, there's some common sense things. Let's like try to help them not be, you know, mean, mean kids. Like it begins at home. There's obviously all the tech things you can do, parental controls and the like, but overall, you know, if we want to protect our kids in the digital age, we have to teach them what it is, we have to set rules around what they have and what their access is, and then we have to, you have to monitor them. So I think the Board of Education can ensure that we have adequate controls around the technology that we make available to the kids, but it's not a problem that we're going to be able to solve. It's a problem that can really be solved at home.
When my youngest was finishing preschool, we got a letter home that they were seeing such a sharp decline in the children's fine motor skills. They didn't know how to hold scissors, they didn't know how to hold pencils correctly. They were trying to write as if they were working on an iPad, they're swiping and they're using their fingers. So this letter had come home and I had a whole discussion about it with one of the teachers at Hewitt, and she said that their muscle development is different. They're laying on their bellies playing with iPads and they're swiping with their fingers. So technology doesn't just have a kind of social aspect to it, but also just a developmental aspect that I think we need to get ahead of as parents, I agree with that, and also within the schools. So there's the very early on use of technology and the pitfalls of that. And then when they get older, the pitfalls just change. They become about the inappropriate use of it or, you know, how they're using social media to exclude instead of including kids and bullying children. We are actually working on a social media forum, which is going to be in the high school on May 22nd, and it's for all parents in the district. And the topic is the appropriate use of technology for our children. And we have Katie Schumacher from Don't Press Send, and we have Detective DeLuca from the Rockville Center Police Department, talking about real-life things that are happening with our children in our town. I think, I hope that you all can attend that. It's for everybody who has a child who has any sort of device from age three up.
I would say, education, education, education. I think parents need to be educated and I think the students need to be educated. I recently attended a high school meeting where Detective DeLuca presented, and I was blown away at the things that are out there and the things that I didn't even know as a parent. And I think it's so important that we as parents are educating ourselves and going and listening to these people that have this knowledge because it's really important that we are imparting that on our children. I think that it would be incredible to have assemblies in the schools, starting down at kindergarten, talking about technology, talking about the inappropriate uses and the positive uses of technology. I think we need to start that at a young age, and I'm very excited that Rockville Center is doing that. We are having meetings at the high school, we are having meetings coming up, and I think that that is so, so important because education is the key to using technology appropriately.
I agree, educating the child from kindergarten all the way through until their adult life is extremely important. However, two years ago, the graduating class from Southside High School was the first class to have the iPhone, the first version of the iPhone when they were in grade five or four. And typically in this day and age, students are getting phones, which for the most part cost anywhere from $400 to $1,000 in grades four through five. So along with that, they're receiving iPads. The district does a wonderful job as far as keeping programs that are appropriate for the children on the iPad and bringing inappropriate programs or apps to the attention of the administrators in the building so that they can work with the students and educate them, along the lines of education. Our elementary schools could possibly offer more programs. They offer currently, I believe, in third grade and fifth grade some programs. I know the Don't Send program is here in, I think, in the middle school, but also needs to be, I think it's going to be advanced into the high school. We need to offer more programs, not just for the kids, but the school district needs to possibly help the parents. A lot of parents don't know what these devices do, and some of them don't know what our kids do with these devices. It's important to ask the kids what they do with their devices and what programs they're using. Thank you.
You finished? Okay. We are now going to have concluding statements. We're going to begin with you, Ms. Stack. You're going to be first and then down to Mr. Fitzgerald. You will be last this time instead of first. You have one and a half minutes. And a reminder to your audience, May 16th is voting day. Okay?
When I think back to my own early childhood education, I think of kindergarten and Mrs. Boguslov at PS 199 in Brooklyn. Mrs. Boguslov played piano and guitar. We learned and sang songs, we painted, played with wooden blocks, and had our own cubbies where we hung our jackets and smocks. As the sixth child of seven, I already knew how to share, but in kindergarten, I learned how to share with others outside my family and began to develop my own personality and interests separate from them. Kindergarten is the first step in the public school journey, where we grow our children in a garden of learning, exploration, creativity, and fun, building a loving foundation and openness for more learning. I mention this because right now, with Common Core and high-stakes testing, we have lost our way in the garden and our purpose has been muddied. Rockville Center schools are not common, and our uncommon excellence is being thwarted by Common Core and high-stakes testing. I pledge to fight to correct these damaging policies so that our children can once again have a love of learning and a meaningful, suitable, appropriate education, but I need your help. I need your vote. In the words of Jerry Maguire, "Help me to help you." Help me to help you, to help our children, to fight the damage being done to them. They say to be the change you wish to see in the world. That's why I'm here. I want to help make education in our town even better. I would love to provide more information to anyone interested in the next few weeks, and I look forward to seeing you in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next? Yes, you're next, Mr. Spolley.
The Rockville Center Board of Education prepared a budget. They're requesting your approval on May 16th. As a member of the Board of Education, I support the proposed budget and ask for your support in approving it so our programs can continue to challenge and meet the needs of the children in our community. As a resident, we all have a vested interest in being an advocate for all the children in our community. I have served as a trustee for seven years, attended every meeting, and worked hard to hold up to the promises that I made seven years ago. I will continue to ensure that our children receive the same or better quality of education that they receive today in our schools, which are among the best in the country. I will continue to familiarize myself with all levels of education and the needs of each building so I can make informed decisions. I will continue to be a visible and accessible board member, visiting all of our schools on a regular basis. This community is my home. I ask for your vote on May 16th, and I thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
A trustee position on the Board of Education would be a natural extension for me as a professional, a volunteer, and a parent. I am fully committed to pursuing the good work of the board and making sure that our district moves in the right direction. I believe that maintaining effective programs in our schools is essential in ensuring that our students are college and career-ready. This in turn continues to make Rockville Center a desirable community in which to live and keeps our property values high. My professional experiences have prepared me to collaborate with others, make fiscally responsible choices, and make difficult decisions while thinking of all stakeholders in the process. These are the skills that are used by the board on a daily basis. I am here to be an advocate for your children and to ensure that this great community of ours, which includes grandparents, parents, students, administrators, staff, and the board, work together to provide the excellent education system that this community has come to expect. I am confident that I can be a strong voice for the community and worked effectively with fellow school board members and district administrators to make impactful, fiscally responsible decisions for all of our Rockville Center residents. I would like to thank the Rockville Center Council of PTAs for organizing this forum, for the League of Women Voters for their assistance in moderating. I would also like to thank all of you for taking the time to be here tonight to educate yourself on all of the candidates. Remember to vote on May, as May 16th.
Thank you.
One of my favorite volunteer quotes is that "They don't always have the time, but they have the heart." And I know that I have the time and the heart for this job. I'd like to reiterate that this is a three-year term. We need people who have shown that they have the stamina for such a demanding position, and I've already proven myself through my dedicated tenure and hard work that I've done on behalf of the district. I can parlay all of these experiences into being a very trustworthy, caring, and innovative board member. I promise to not only listen to the public, but work diligently on your behalf and ensure that the decisions that are made reflect your needs and desires. A true leader cares about tomorrow and speaks for those who can't speak for themselves. I've always been a leader. I'm not a follower, I'm not afraid of change, I think very carefully about every decision that I make, and I would be entering as a school board member with no alliances and no personal agenda. As a child from public school who now can pan out and look at it from a bird's eye view, I realize that a great many people were the people who afforded me that education. Decisions on a five-person Board of Education come down to a three-person majority. That's three people that can make the decisions that base of, that will impact your taxes and your children, and you can elect two of them on May 16th. I ask you, who do you trust to make those decisions for you and represent you? And I implore you to elect candidates that will represent you, work for you, speak for you, and fight for your kids. I will do that. I love the children, that's why I'm here. I look forward to what's in store for our district and what's going on for our advancement.
Thank you.
I want to thank the PTA, the League of Women Voters, the League of Women Voters, our hosts here at Southside Middle School, and you, the voters coming out to educate yourself tonight. Thank you for spending the time with us. I think there's a stark choice here for everyone tonight. We've got the status quo represented by the majority of candidates here, or we have a choice for independence. We have a choice for new experience. We have a choice for something other than PTA presidents serving on our Board of Education because right now we have five, and we have three of them here on stage. I think the community needs to hold ourselves to a higher standard around governance of this most important institution here in our village. You know, most large enterprises have independent boards governing the administration of whatever's being provided, whether it be public or private. And here we've had a breakdown. Our village has gotten comfortable with... Our, our village has gotten comfortable with this being the final rung of the PTA hierarchy. And I would ask the voters tonight to consider a change, a vote for experience, a vote for independence, a vote for good governance. I owe, I don't owe anyone anything. I have funded my own campaign, I have no affiliations, I have no commitments or alliances. Truly independent. And I would ask tonight for you to consider that and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. A hand of applause, please. Thank you very much, and good luck to all of you.